Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, and we are going to call to order this evening revenue neutral rate budget hearing. I would accept a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second, Deb. Okay. Motion by Gina, seconded by Deb, to adopt the agenda. All in favor? Five-oh. Okay. You will find your revenue neutral rate budget hearing as addendum one. Can we get a little explanation on this from Scott?
Sure. So this was a new thing this year. It had to do with the state legislature and their attempt to have transparency in taxation in the state of Kansas. So what they classify as revenue neutral rate, probably the easiest way to understand it is to look at it from a revenue perspective. So do you increase revenues? Do you maintain the same revenues or do you decrease revenues? So they're comparing our revenue rate compared to last year to what we proposed for this year. So we're not changing any mill levies. What's happening is our taxation rate is staying the same, but because valuations have increased, that automatically increases our revenue to the district. So the county clerk had to estimate the revenue neutral rate for Lincoln County, and that was 8.488. Our actual tax rate is 19.043 mils. So we exceed what they call the revenue neutral rate. It just makes sense that if you have a percentage of something and that something goes up in value, your percentage is more valuable. So that's probably the simplest way to explain it is just think of it as revenue. If assets go up, our piece of the revenue goes up. So we have to have this hearing so that the public knows that we are exceeding the revenue neutral rate. We're not exceeding our tax rate. We're just going to receive more money for the same taxation level.
Okay. Do you want to read that resolution red in its entirety? Resolution number seven, twenty-one oh three. A resolution expressing the property taxation policy of USD two ninety-eight Lincoln with respect to exceeding the revenue neutral tax rate for financing the annual budget for twenty-one, twenty-two. Whereas twenty-twenty-one SB thirteen and since then for HB twenty-one oh four provides that the levy of property taxes to finance the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget of USD two ninety-eight exceeds the revenue neutral tax rate as determined by the county clerk to finance the twenty-one, twenty-two budget of USD two ninety-eight be authorized by a resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Unified School District, number two ninety-eight, that the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget with a levy of property taxes exceeding the revenue neutral tax rates calculated for the twenty-one, twenty-two as adjusted pursuant to twenty-one SB thirteen and since then for HB twenty-one oh four is hereby adopted for the following funds. Interfund exceeding revenue neutral rate. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve that? Yeah, Deb.
I'll second.
David? Motion by Deb, seconded by David, that USD two ninety-eight Board of Education adopt resolution seven, twenty-one oh three. All in favor? Opposed? Five-oh. Okay. Do you need to adjourn that or not?
No, it's not really. It was a meeting.
Was it here? Okay. Now we're going to move on to the budget hearing. We will call that to order. Before we adopt the agenda, we need to make a note that we are going to delete number four. This is just the hearing meeting. We're not going to accept the budget as presented, so I would accept a motion to adopt that as amended.
I'll second.
Okay. Gina?
I'll second.
Okay. Bree? Motion by Gina, seconded by Bree, that USD two ninety-eight Board of Education delete number four. Accept budget as presented from this budget hearing and adopt the amended agenda. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Five-oh. Okay. Now for your budget hearing, you will look at addendum number two. If you have any questions or over -- Scott, you want to go through a couple of the highlights?
Well, I would just point out our general budget. In your board book, if you look at code six on page one, you'll see that our state financial aid actually decreased $24,454. What we're -- the percentage for LOB is thirty percent of your general fund. Because the state average, there's so many schools that have gone to thirty-three percent as we've talked about in the past. Because so many schools have moved up in that LOB percentage, the state average now is thirty-one percent. So we automatically qualify for thirty-one percent in LOB without any action because that is the state average. Here are some highlights from when we were billing the budget. We were overall able to reduce the mill rate by .68. So for the last two years, we've actually been able to reduce the mill rate of taxation. We currently have about ten percent cash reserve. Their recommendation is twelve to eighteen percent, and fifteen is a good number. So even though we were able to transfer some monies at the end of the year to our very low funds like capital outlay and food service, I don't know if you remember, last year we started food service with zero dollars in food service, and already we've had over $10,000 worth of expenses in food service. Last year we started with zero dollars. So there are certain accounts that you can transfer money to so that you can basically prepare for the initial costs of starting up a school year. We were able to transfer some funds to some of these accounts, but we are still about 4.3 percent lower than what they recommend for a healthy reserve cash fund. So we're going to try again this year to really hold the line and see how we can end the year up. It's no different than anybody's personal finances or talk to Dave Ramsey, and you hit your magic cash reserves, then you can breathe, and then you can not have to worry about being so critical all the time of wondering if we'll have enough. I think probably the most exciting part is with our valuations going up in our county, our LOB mill is -- our revenue, back to the revenue neutral rate, our revenue increases simply because of valuation increase. So even though we're seeing a reduction from state aid, we're at least getting some of that back from a thirty-one percent LOB, and our valuation's going up, so our taxation revenue will go up. It still will be, in my mind, a pretty tight year, and I think it needs to be a really tight year.
Anybody has questions? Headed in the right direction.
Definitely headed in the right direction. It was a good, solid financial year last year.
Okay.
And I would say we definitely appreciate Mr. Crenshaw's efforts last year and the tone he did this year of giving us the ship righted and getting us back in a good fiscal position.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Hearing, no other questions or concerns. I think we will move on to our regular meeting of the budget hearing. You will pull up your agenda here. We have a couple of changes before we adopt. Number four that we removed from the regular budget hearing meeting is now going to be number four on our regular board meeting, and we are going to change the twenty-one credit policy to four A. That change, and then on the next page towards the bottom, we are going to add a sixteen That is all the amendments to the agenda. So a big motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Deb, seconded by David, that USD two ninety-eight Board of Education change number four to adopt the budget and move the twenty-one credit policy to four A and add an executive session for negotiations as sixteen A for an amended agenda for the Board of Education to adopt. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Five-oh. Okay. You'll look at your consent agenda. We have approvals, pay the bills, treasurer's report, clerk's report, direct commission reports in there, and we also have an anonymous $250 donation for Menterfield. We're going to accept that. Okay. Gina?
I'll second.
Bree? Motion by Gina, seconded by Bree, to approve the items listed on the consent agenda consisting of approve the minutes of the meeting of August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, approve payment of the bills, approve the treasurer's report, approve the clerk's report, approve the Lincoln County Rec Commission report by Kelly Snyder, and accept the $250 anonymous donation for repair of the track at Menterfield. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Five-oh. Thank you for that donation to the track. Okay. Now we would send the motion to adopt the budget that we just looked over.
I move we adopt the budget as presented. I second.
Motion by Deb, seconded by Gina, that USD two ninety-eight Board of Education adopt the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two USD two ninety-eight Lincoln opposed budget. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Five-oh. Motion carried. Okay. Now we will move on to the twenty-one credit policy. And then Scott.
I think this was shared with you, but there was a hard topic.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so what Mrs. Flynn and I did on this is we separated some things out a little bit, and then we also added a little bit with what our credit recovery policy might look like because that wasn't really in there. But the twenty-one credit policy to graduate would be if a senior mathematically cannot reach twenty-five credits. At this point, where we're at right now today, I have one senior who would need to use this in order to graduate. I have a second senior who could potentially end the year with twenty-four and a half credits, so I'm going to try really hard to get him to make up that half credit in another place, but that remains to be seen right now. But as we talked about last month, that if there's no mathematical way by their senior year, that we would be able to switch them to the twenty-one state-required credit path to graduate, which if you remember, the only difference between what Lincoln required and what the state required was less electives, and then we require the personal finance class. That was the only difference between the two. Still, four English, three math, three social studies, three science. And then if we do put a student on this path for English and math, we would like to be able to apply if they have been in an MTSS class to earn English or math credit towards those, and then the personal finance class that all seniors take, be able to count that as a math class if needed. The students that I have in this situation right now will not need to use the MTSS class or the personal finance class as long as everything is passed as is. Number three on there is would be if, and this is a very big if, we would hope not to have to use this, but that we could embed credits into CTE programs into pathways. These might be kids that are going the ag pathway or something like that. We would allow them to walk with their class at graduation. However, the diploma that they would receive would look a little different. It would be the Kansas State High School diploma earned at Lincoln High School. Okay. The second page on there, this is -- Mrs. Flynn and I did this, it's the -- just to kind of clear up the credit recovery process. So if a student does fail a required class, these are the things that we would like to happen. Number one, retake the class with a certified teacher. I mean, that is the preferred method. We'd rather than be in person than online. Number two would be if they are taking it online, that they do that through the Edgenuity program. And then we also listed out the things that we would expect to do in the Edgenuity program that they are monitored by certified teachers. This is happening right now between myself and Mrs. Petit. We are with them almost every single day, both of us, if not one of us is. Even if they're on this path, as long as they've reached the twenty-five credits, they can still get the Lincoln High School diploma. And just so you know, there are some situations where a student might not need an entire year. We have a lot of students, they might pass first semester of English, but then they fail second semester of English. So they're only making up the credit that they failed. They're not retaking the entire class. The program allows students to test out a material that's set up by the program, but if they know the information, they can just go right through it. And in this program, though, that if it -- we would like to be able to alter it to meet the needs of a student individually based on their reading or math level, where they're at. Just to kind of let you know, when the year started, we had twenty-five total semesters that needed to be made up, just counting all of the credits that needed to be recovered. Because of some classes that had already been started previously, that the kids never finished them, we kind of put our thumbs on them, and we have three semesters already finished. And so we are currently have twenty-two left. We have eleven semesters currently enrolled with students that they are working on actively right now, and almost all of them are on target right now. So we feel like they're making good progress with that. We're sure trying really hard and encouraging them every day just to get their things done and helping them whatever we can, however we can. And then the last page of that is the embedded credit policy. Just a reminder, you can only embed an English, math, or a science credit, and it would need to be the final credit of their high school career. And we would be -- we would use information from the work keys ACT, which all of our juniors take that exam. It's coming up here at the end of October sometime. There's three parts to that test, and they would have to receive certain scores on that and be placed in a pathway program in order to use this. Our hope is that this does not come about, but we would like that to be available in extreme circumstances. I feel like the sophomores and juniors, that we're trying to get in front of them in the situation, that hopefully this year, we're going to get them back on target and get them back where they need to be. And if something happens that they don't -- that they do not passing something first semester, then we're already going to be talking about what are we going to do now? And how can we help that and make it a little bit better so that when they're seniors, everyone hopefully will be on the twenty-five credit path? But if not, I mean, I'm just thinking of that student that if we don't do something, he's going to graduate with twenty-four and a half or wouldn't be allowed to graduate. He's a half of a credit short. And yes, that was his choices of not getting work done prior to the senior year, but I think anything we can do to help these kids graduate and move on and become productive citizens would be an amazing thing. So do you have any questions about any of this that we have worked on?
No. Appreciate all your work putting this together and helping get these kids back on track.
And I might add real quick that, and I think I said this last time we talked about it, you know, high school credits was a system that was established about 150 years ago, and it has not evolved with our changing society. So I know that as the new counselor came in and Mrs. Flynn took over the ship over there, you know, some of the things we discovered were there were no credit checklists on students. So they would come to their senior year, and then it would be seen if they had enough credits. So something that that team over there has implemented is a credit checklist sheet that will be updated every semester of every year. So things like this won't be needed because they won't finish their first semester, their sixth grade year, without a conversation -- well, I say credits, freshman year, when credits are building up. They will be encouraged after their first semester freshman year because we will know exactly where they are. No more surprises. So as we look at this, not only is it what we need for our current crisis kids, but I see this as being less and less used once we get over a hump and we get some years of track record down. The other thing is with the embedded credits, one of the things we have to realize is when we find out what a kid needs, when the state uses phrases like individual plan of study, find out students' interests, and then build a schedule around those interests, it might not include four years of English and three years of science and three years of math and three years of social studies. We have to make our education relevant for the student in the place that they're in. And if that means they're on a different path and we can give them a half a day in a tech center, and I know that that team over there is working on it, that has great value if that kid knows what they want to do. In the past, all we've done is say, well, that's really nice that that's what you want to do, but here's what you have to do to graduate, because it doesn't align with what you want to do, and we don't guess, I guess, we don't care what you want to do. You're going to jump through our hoop. And those days have to change so that our education becomes relevant, and we don't discourage kids, but we encourage them to be successful. And I can't thank the team over there enough for taking on a massive overhaul of our student evaluation systems for credits, so huge shout-out, even though I know her.
Well, here is what I know, is that I have a student who is making up a couple of classes, and we are -- he is a student who wouldn't necessarily give you a lot of feedback on things, but we have him talking to us every day, smiling at us every day, and talking about the possibility of next year going and taking some type of classes. And all of a sudden, his interest because of Mrs. Nitsch's class become interested in welding and things like that. And if we can push that, then he will graduate, and he will graduate with some skills. And that is -- that's my goal, to help him get there. For her.
Thanks.
Thank you. I feel like they're playing a tune for me somewhere.
So, dear Oscars, that's the music when you just go off.
When I'm supposed to stop.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Ms. Flynn? Okay. Motion?
I move we approve the twenty-one credit policy.
Okay.
I will second that.
Okay. Motion by Deb, seconded by Gina, that the Board of Education approve the twenty-one credit policy for graduation on a case-by-case basis as determined by the building principal and counselor. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Five-oh. Just a test?
Yeah. No. Probably will. That's okay.
Next, number five, insurance update.
Well, I am excited to share with you, after we had a couple of discussions on our coverage levels and what we were comfortable with accepting as far as exposure, that we got our -- we received our refund from the Davidson Agency at the tune of $8,741 off of our insurance premium. So that puts us back down to the mid to upper seventies. But that's a significant savings as we looked at all the vehicles, we moved vehicles to liability only that were over. All the adjustments we made just kind of came together, and I call that a significant premium savings. So thank you for supporting that.
Another overhaul. Okay. Any comments? Moving on, number six, mayor town presentation by Denise. Mrs. Smith?
All right. Well, I feel like this takes us very well into what Mr. Crenshaw and Mrs. Crenshaw were talking about, getting students some real-world skills. This is a really exciting program I've wanted to participate in for the last three years, and for a variety of reasons we haven't. So this is a program through the Next Generation Roundup for Youth. We are very lucky in northwest Kansas that that's an organization that we have access to. We're in their encatchment zone, if you will. A couple of things to think about. One change we're going to see this year at the elementary level is history, government, social studies. In the past, history, government, social studies at the elementary level have not been assessed. This year, they will be assessed for fourth graders, and next year, they'll also be assessed as well in a system where they'll have to have so many projects by fifth grade as the years progress. So it's not a traditional test anymore. What they're now looking at is something very popular because they realize we have a variety of different learners out there, and that is hands-on, project-based learning. So you have an ability to come up with an idea, you have a rubric to investigate that idea, and then you create, you explore that idea, and that's what you're graded on and what you're assessed on. So these will be the new state standards for history, government, social studies. So what we're going to do, and I will let the program explain itself. I could drill it on for 20 minutes, but the 10-minute video is pretty great to watch. So as I said, this is a program, Next Generation Roundup for Youth. There is a cost to it. It's a very minimal cost for what you're getting out of the program. We have, and I've worked with finding some partners in the community to underwrite that cost and sustain that cost for the next years. So this would be something that we would like the fourth graders to do each year and have funding for those fourth graders. And the reason we chose the fourth grade, fifth grade participates in another real-world, hands-on learning experience that's quite extensive, and that's Starbase. And we would just have too much to do, so we looked at fourth grade. The other part of this program that's going to be really great is when we get into those history, government, social studies standards. history, government, social studies standards, they already have all the information then in order to develop their personalized learning plan, their project-based assessment for their social studies standards. So it works really well together. So now we secured a base funding and sustainable funding. We also lack volunteers because one thing you'll see is in this program, it does take volunteers to run it. But Citizen State Bank has generously had some employees step up and decided to be volunteers, so we are very appreciative of that. So as we look at this program, another thing to think about is it focuses on rural communities. One of the things that we all know is we often lose our best and our brightest to larger cities. So how it shows students how you can live in a rural community, how you can work in a rural community and be successful. So there's a lot of great things about this program. So I will stop and let you watch what Ameritown is.
All about providing career-centric opportunities for youth throughout Northwest and North Central Kansas. Young Ameritown of Kansas is one great example.
This video is for you to explore all the different curriculum aspects of Young Ameritown of Kansas located here in Lenora, Kansas, in the former Lenora High School building. This video is for you to explore at your own pace.
The Young Ameritown curriculum is designed by the Young American Center for Financial Education in Denver and is geared towards the fifth and sixth grades, but is highly adaptable for seventh, eighth, and other grades. Aligned to common core standards, this four-to-six week program centers around the basics of a free enterprise system. Areas of concentration include basic economics, banking, money management, government, communications, philanthropy, and business, employment, and entrepreneurship. At the conclusion of the classroom experience, your school will complete the semester by bringing your students to Young Ameritown of Kansas for a day at town. The day at town is approximately four hours and 30 minutes. Arrival time is 9:15 for parent volunteers and 9:45 for students. Departure is 2:00 P.M. Participants supply their own transportation and bring a sack lunch and a bottle of water. Students are fully engaged throughout the day with only a brief pause for lunch at noon, and even that is a working lunch.
One of our mottos at Next Generation is from a classroom to a career. And here at Young Ameritown, the students do just that. They're able to run their own mini-community made up of 10 shops where the students become managers, accountants, et cetera, employees. They run the shops, so they're learning what it's like to experience real-world jobs. In just a short amount of time, they can take all they've learned in the classroom and transfer that knowledge into a hands-on environment, immediately putting the processes and concepts to work. And the beauty of it is it sticks. You can ask them years down the road and students will tell you that coming to Young Ameritown of Kansas was the best field trip that they ever had. It really truly prepared them to go from the classroom to a career.
Teachers come to Young Ameritown of Kansas at the beginning of the semester where they will receive a comprehensive orientation of the curriculum, tour town, and be equipped with all the tools necessary for their students to have a successful classroom and day at town experience.
Students are in for a real treat. Here in Ameritown, the students will take all the lessons and experiences that they learned in the classroom and apply them during their day at town. Students will experience skill development in basic banking processes, learn about competition, supply and demand, how to write checks, fill out deposit slips, and make deposits to the bank. They will learn about debit cards and will use them in town. They'll learn about basic government processes, run a campaign for mayor or judge, and vote in a primary and general election. They'll learn specific workplace roles, fill out job applications, and interview for specific positions in town. They'll conduct staff meetings and receive training for their job. Once they arrive in town, they are now citizens of Young Ameritown of Kansas, and it's their town for the day. They run the shops and we are just there to answer questions and provide guidance. It's their town.
Volunteers are a vital part of your day at town experience. We ask that each school brings one parent or community volunteer for each shop. Their role is to assist the students with questions and provide guidance.
The Young Ameritown of Kansas program benefits our local communities by emphasizing to students the importance of buying local, remaining local, and donating to local nonprofit organizations. It also contributes to a feeling of community pride.
Community leaders are a great resource as interviewers during the job preparation portion of the curriculum or as volunteers on your day at town. Their involvement encourages networking among students and community members at an early age, setting them up for potential future opportunities for internships, part-time jobs, and full-time careers.
Welcome to Town Hall. This is where the action begins. As students arrive, we direct them into Town Hall where they're going to receive instruction for the day and a recap of some of the classroom principles they learned back at school.
In Town Hall, we conduct opening ceremonies where the judge and mayor are sworn into office and the mayor gives an address and conducts a ribbon-cutting ceremony to officially open town for the day. This is the only day we will ask the students to spend all their paycheck in one day. Students are learning the importance of supporting your local community. We ask them specifically what can happen to their community if they don't spend their money in a shop. Their goals are to keep accurate checking account records and for their businesses to be able to earn income, to pay back a business loan plus interest, and make a profit. Within Town Hall, we have the mayor and judge, both are elected officials. Students hold campaigns and vote a primary and general election for these positions. Town Hall also houses the police department and postal service. Citizens who disobey town laws may be given a citation by an officer and pay a fine before the judge. Postal carriers sell stamps and postcards and deliver mail throughout town. In the center of Town Hall, students gather for a working lunch and watch interviews conducted and recorded by the TV station. At the conclusion of the day, we all return to Town Hall again for closing activities, a recap of important points learned, and the presentation of awards.
The bank looks and feels like a real bank. Tellers assist with deposits and cash withdrawals. Computer operators enter transactions in the Ameritown banking system, a system that is specifically built for Young Ameritown of Kansas, and it's an internet system that keeps track of all business accounts and individual student accounts.
At the end of the day, we print out a bank statement for each business and each student and the teachers take those home and use it as another learning experience for the students. They use it and analyze it to see how well their business performed and how accurate they were with their personal banking records.
Another way we provide a real-world experience to the students here at Ameritown is with our online kiosks. They can get online and check their bank account and they can order things online.
Everyone loves a tasty snack. As you can imagine, the snack shop is very popular and extremely busy. Snack shop employees sell drinks, chips, and freshly baked chocolate chip cookies. The manager works with his or her employees to determine starting prices. As demand for an item changes, the shop workers determine whether to raise or lower prices, putting the concepts of supply and demand into practice. The shop's accountants keep accurate records of deposits and make focal trips to the bank throughout the day to deposit checks and cash received through sales. They also monitor debit card transactions. The container shop is great for those students who like to build things, really hands-on. Here, assemblers build birdhouses that will be given away as gifts at the end of the day and assemble briefcases for sale in town.
The sign and print shop is a full-on creativity zone where students make signs for all the other 10 shops in the economy. Graphic designers use great computer templates already created for them. After printing the signs, the designers add color and other final touches and deliver them to each respective shop. They also sell things like Young Ameritown pencils and magic disappearing ink.
Prior to coming to Young Ameritown of Kansas, students have had an opportunity to learn about renewable and non-renewable resources in their classroom. At town, they get a good hand to practice by making service calls for their technicians. Here in Ameritown, our energy resources field technicians provide service and repair services to each of the shops. The techs put on their uniform vest, grab their work suncombs, and take their toolbox and supplies from shop to shop. They change out light bulbs, replace old light switches, check security alarms, and more. Sales associates sell and engrave dog tags and sell tool keychains to help the shop make a profit. Superstation YATV is a great place for outgoing and active students. Reporters produce business commercials during the morning and then newscasts and weather reports in the afternoon. All students enjoy watching their commercials on the big screen TV in Town Hall during lunch. Photojournalists use an iPad to capture interviews on camera and edit them before viewing. This is the Ameritown newspaper office. Here, reporters gather stories from around town, type us, enter the stories into newspaper templates in the computer. Our staff prints off the final copy during lunch. In the afternoon, newspaper staff sells the newspaper hot off the press. What a great souvenir.
The medical center is another interactive and engaging place. Here, you'll find medical technicians and doctors, uniformed, and are ready to take patients. A medical technician will pull a symptom card that directs them to pick up a patient at one of the shops. They drive the ambulance safely down Kansas Avenue and transport the patient back to the medical center for treatment. The patient must remember to bring along their checkbook because they will be required to make a $2 copayment. The doctor sees the patient and provides a diagnosis. They might come in with a headache and leave in a boot. Many of our small rural communities have volunteer fire departments. So do we at Young Ameritown of Kansas. At some time during the day, we sound an alarm and one volunteer from each of the town's shops hurries down to the fire department, puts on their gears, and searches for the fire somewhere down Kansas Avenue. Soon as the students return from finding the fight, they take off their uniform and head right back to work. While on the department, students learn a lot about community involvement, volunteering, and safety.
Station YATK is a live radio station here at Young Ameritown, complete with DJs who play music, take song requests, and play business ads. This is a great shop for those outgoing students who have a strong voice, good sense of humor, and vast knowledge of music. Schools can bring their own playlist or use ours.
One of the things that makes our small communities work is donations to charitable activities and organizations. At Ameritown, part of the curriculum includes a philanthropy piece where students learn about what it takes to practice philanthropy, and they have an opportunity to donate to four local charities during the day as an individual and as a business group. The thing that's really neat about it is there are local philanthropists that will match their donations, 10 cents to the dollar, and make it a real experience for the kids. We really appreciate that.
Schools that participate will either the fall or spring semesters. Tuition is based on a per-student cost with 20% down and the balance due 30 days following your scheduled town date. A minimum of 25 students is required for the Ameritown economy to run. Smaller schools may be combined to meet that requirement. The maximum number of students is 70. When you're ready to enroll, please give us a call so we can discuss your class size and get you scheduled.
As I said, it's much better to see it in person. First of all, what a great use of a former school. I mean, what a creative use, but I just think this is an excellent program and we are so excited to get started. When we talked about the sustainability of it, Citizen State Bank has generously agreed to underwrite a portion of it. We're still looking for other active donations to underwrite the other portion of that funding for this program. But it would be our goal that every year, fourth graders would participate in this program and then use that knowledge gain as a basis for that state assessment, project-based learning that I talked about earlier. Any questions, comments? It does look fun.
You say they will adapt that a little bit for like the fourth grader?
Yes, yes. And I had a conversation with Jackie, the director, about that, and she didn't think that would be a problem at all. And I've spoken with the fourth grade teachers, they'll go down and train in that curriculum, and it really ties well right into fourth grade. I only wish every copay was $2. That would be great.
Yeah, I was excited about that.
I know.
Wouldn't that be great?
All right.
Thank you. Next, we have Board of Education work session. In class, mother, we asked students to find out whether they had available Saturdays or a time that might work. I've had one member reach out to me with a few dates that might work or curious about. I don't know if anyone else has any others that they can or can't do. September 25th, October 2nd, or November 13th?
I would not be available September 25th. I don't know that I can October 2nd. You said November 13th?
Yes.
I couldn't do either of the other two, so.
Okay, okay. I guess that narrows it down.
Are we thinking in the morning or what are we thinking time?
I would prefer morning if we could.
I think we're basically fresher in the morning, but does somebody have a, that would be my preference. That's. Anyone else? I could probably round up some cinnamon rolls to bring along. You're still thinking six or do you want to push it back to 6:30? Number 13, pushing the time change, so six would probably work.
I'll use to be able at 14:15, so that works for me.
See, it's opening day of the season, we go out for a couple hours. I don't know if it's available November 13th. I'm not sure whether that's first Saturday or second Saturday.
The second.
It's gotta be the second. Is 8:00 AM too early? 8:00 AM good? Okay. Then let's select November 13th at 8:00 AM for a Board of Education work session. Hopefully, we can do it in a reasonable amount of time. Oh, motion. Okay. Motion by Bree, seconded by Deb, that USD 298 Board of Education select November 13th at 8:00 AM for a Board of Education work session. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. And that would be for putting together some goals for 298.
If you're interested, Green Bush helped me put together a survey for strategic planning, and I do have the results of that survey from community stakeholders, staff members, et cetera. If he is available, he is more than happy to zoom in and review kind of a strategic planning step if you want to kind of get the ball rolling or if you just want to tackle it ourselves, that's fine too. But if he's available, it's part of our Green Bush services that we pay for and help with strategic plans.
That would probably be good to have that in his, so.
Yeah, his is typically a five-year model.
Sounds good. All right. Moving on, we need to approve some donations. Are these just donations? Are they for track or just? We have the Davidson Agency, $400 for LHS volleyball bags. Lincoln County Farm Bureau in the amount of $500 for the FFA program. And the Inventory Trading Company in the amount of $120 for Lincoln football.
I shall move except you with.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by David, seconded by Gina, that the Board of Education approve the following donations, the David Agency in the amount of $400 for LHS volleyball bags, the Lincoln County Farm Bureau in the amount of $500 for the FFA program, and Inventory Trading Company in the amount of $120 for Lincoln football. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much for your generous donations to our school and programs. Okay. Next, we have a dishwasher proposal for the high school at number three.
So as we continue to evaluate food service and food service efficiencies, one of our blockades right now is the dishwasher system that's at the high school. It is a chemical sanitation system. The temperature is The temperatures get up to 130 degrees. That's as hot as that system gets, so we have to use chemical additives to actually sanitize the dishes. The other challenge that we have with that is it is not high-power enough or high heat enough to actually clean the dishes. So if you would like to go over there sometime and witness this, what they have, you know, in most restaurants and commercial washing systems, they have that hose hanging down with a sprayer, and you rinse something off and you put it in the dishwasher. We have a scrub brush on the end of our sprayer, and they wash every square of every tray because if they put anything into the dishwasher with residue, it comes out of the dishwasher with residue. So we don't have a dishwasher. We have a sanitizer. The dishwashing occurs before we put it into the machine. So I got in contact with a company in Salina and was just discussing options, and they talked about a high-heat Hobart system. So I said, "I need to see one in action." There's two of them over in Minneapolis, so Alicia, Nikki, and I went over there last week at lunch because we wanted to see this system in place. Couple things about it. It is high heat. The temperature goes over 180 degrees. That does two things. It's a high-heat sanitizer, but it also heats the... Whatever's being washed so high that it typically dries itself in about 30 seconds after the cycle. When ours come out, then they're wet, and you wait, and you wait, or you towel dry them. And then, because we have to wash all trays between junior high and senior high lunch, we have to cycle through them all quickly. The other thing that was amazing about that is, and we jumped into their line and asked if we could play with a little bit, because of the high heat, it dissolves those solids. So we were putting in trays where we didn't wash them off. We splatter washed them off. I think one of the key elements was that their spray hose does not have a scrub brush on the end of it. And it was just very impressive. Another limitation that we have, when we use full-size baking sheets, they won't even fit in our dishwasher in a rack. So what you have to do is open our door, put the sheet in, put it on the dishwasher rack on one side, and just lean it against the side of the dishwasher. So Minneapolis had a low-profile unit and a high-profile unit in two different buildings. We went to see them both. The high-profile unit will hold six baking trays at one time. So no wedging one at a time, no scrubbing the put-in-out of it with an SOS pad before you put it in there, which is what we currently do with baking sheets. The other thing is our current dishwasher cycles a 90-second cycle, and these did a 50-second cycle for wash and sanitize. So, you know, KSDE rates our efficiencies by meals per labor hour. So their goal for us is 10. I did kind of a rough estimate, and right now, our junior, senior high school is over 12 meals per labor hour, and the elementary school is at 11. I will tell you this, they don't get that way without working their tails off. And if you would talk to Alicia, or Jenny, or anybody in that kitchen, from the time they get there to the time they leave, there is no downtime. So one of the big holdups in our line is this dishwashing system. So I would like to propose to you that we look at the tall dishwasher system from Hobart. The unit itself is $17,975. The exhaust hood, which we already have an exhaust fan and we already have the ductwork, but the exhaust hood that fits that is $1,300. That's $17,975. $17,975. That's freight, delivery, uncrating, assembly, and set in place. We would have some costs because this requires a higher voltage service, three wire. The conduit is already there, so we would have some costing pushing new wire through the old conduit. Also, the hood would have to be fabricated to the existing ductwork that goes up to the ceiling. Where we're going to get the hood, we have to attach it to the 12-inch by 12-inch ductwork. We've already repaired the motor up on the roof for this exhaust system. I don't know how long it hasn't worked. It was in channels. So we've replaced the belt. We've replaced the switch, so it's now functioning. I just think as we continue to look at moving more and more toward a centralized kitchen, we have to look at the things that are bottlenecking us. This right now is bottlenecking us. I would propose we take it out of some of the wind farm money and move ahead and supplying the right piece of equipment for our kitchen staff.
Thank you, Scott. Any other questions?
Well, I was gonna ask how we're gonna pay for it, but... I think that... How soon can they have it in? Do they have one?
I don't really answer that question. Okay, will you work it?
The other thing this is, just to compare two systems. Our system right now does a wash cycle, and then that drains out. And then it does a rinse cycle, and that goes into a holding tank. Then that rinse water gets injected with soap and sanitizer. It becomes the next wash cycle. And then it drains out, and then there's rinse water, and it repeats that way. So every cycle, it's draining out the wash water and replacing it with rinse water, rechemicalizing it.
Yes, or rechemicalize.
And it just does that rotation. This one uses the same wash water. So you can get 30 to 45 racks out of a wash cycle, and then it gets replaced.
What would happen with the existing dishwasher? I mean, it's not broken, right?
It's not broken, but it's valuable.
Is there any sort of trade-in option, or?
I can ask. Because it doesn't... It would be, you know, minimal, minimal. I haven't looked at the grade school yet, at that machine, because currently, there isn't any washing going on to speak of with plastic trays. But if we get into trays there, it might be something to look at there, or if this one is efficient enough... You know, in a perfect world, everything goes there, everything comes back. But we're still... It's still a work in progress, and it's evolving as we learn and get used to it and things like that.
Mr. Crenshaw? We actually moved over to plastic trays after Labor Day. So we're washing plastic trays.
Every day?
Mm-hmm.
A little more discussion? Anyone wanna make a motion?
I'm going to begin with this question.
Okay.
For Mr. Crenshaw's suggestions.
Okay. To clarify, that would be a total of $19,275 that we would pull out of wind fund.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Plus installation of electrical services and hood fabrication.
Okay, motion by David, seconded by Gina, that the Board of Education approve the purchase of a commercial dishwasher from Sunflower Restaurant and Supply Salina, Kansas, in the amount of $19,275 for the kitchen at Lincoln Junior/Senior High School. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on, we have S R 3 spending plan.
I have my initial application ready to go. And I would just like your approval on the plan that was presented for the initial option 1 so that I can get some things rolling and get in the application queue. It's still, it again, has to go through the state task force at KSDE, and then it has to go to the State Board of Education for approval before they will release funds for us to draw now. So I need to get this initial application done. It doesn't involve 100% of the funding. This is just the first let's-get-going.
Starts the paperwork moving.
Yeah, I need to get in the queue. Are there any questions about that option 1?
It's kind of what we're talking about.
I have the motion. Yes, I move for your S R 3 spending plan is presented by Mr. Crenshaw.
Okay. Motion by Gina.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Deb, that the Board of Education approve the proposed USD 298 Lincoln Initial S R 3 Spending Plan. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Five of them. Okay, next, we have a bus proposal.
So dear old bus number 20. You may have seen it sitting in the weeds over at the high school, although it was recently trimmed, so you can even see it better now, which was good. Bus 20 is a 71-passenger undercarriage storage AC bus, air-conditioned bus. It is a diesel. Has 59,000 miles on it. It's a 2014 model that we bought in 2012. So in 2012, we went back to the future. Buses, they make two years in advance, not like automobiles. So in 2012, we bought a 2014 bus. The wheels on that bus have not gone round and round very much because it has air brakes. There's only a couple of people that can drive that particular bus, so it sits. We currently, for activities, part of our contract with DS Bus Lines is that they will provide an activity bus at cost, at a cost, not at cost, but at a cost. Last year, we paid $11,533 on top of our DS bus contract to transport our students to activities while the big, pretty, yellow bus 20 sat over there growing weeds around it. So every year that it sits there that we can't use it, it depreciates even more. I would like to liquidate that bus. I thought I had a great plan of buying an activity bus that was hydraulic brake, still 71-passenger, underbelly storage, and air conditioning. But there are a lot of driver requirements. So I have to tell you, I don't have a specific plan right now. I've looked at a replacement bus like that, but I have to find a driver. If we employ a driver, then we have to follow all of the state and DOT regulations of safety trainings, drug testings, things like that. I've looked at non-CDL minibuses, 15 passengers that are under 26,000 pounds. But when we go on a junior, senior high trip that has 60 kids in it, 15-passenger buses isn't going to get it. I've talked about having travel teams versus 100% of everybody going. It's just a constantly moving ball right now as to what the best strategy would be for activity transportation. But one thing I do know is that every year that that bus sits over there out in the sun, the hood has already got peeled paint. Pictures that I've sent to dealers about trades have said, "We're gonna have to paint the hood because, like our other vehicles we talked about, it sits out in that sun, and it is rotting away, and it is depreciating every single year." So I thought it would be a great idea to get some feelers out there and see if there was any other district that would be interested in it. Trade-in value that I got was about $18,000. Market value for people that are selling them online themselves, districts, it should go anywhere between $30,000 and $45,000. It was a $92,000 bus when we bought it. But it's an asset that's depreciating and rotting away. And I think the sooner we get rid of it and we set that money aside until a good plan is in place, that money doesn't get touched. That would be reserved specifically for an activity solution.
Can you explain a little bit what kind of driver situations? Or against... Biggie said you had some ideas, but you had to go.
Well, I was gonna move to a coach-driving plan, which most schools do. If you're gonna drive your team, you drive it yourself. So I thought we could pay coaches to get their CDL license, and then they drive a normal school bus. As more research was done and more information was shared, I find out that if we have an employee driving a bus on a regular basis, then we're in charge of their 10 safety training meetings every year, the random drug screening, and any of the other driver requirements DS takes care of. And now those would now fall on us.
Is that why other schools are handling it? They're handling all requirements?
If they own buses, they're handling those requirements, yes. If they're only doing activities, some places have a volunteer driver that's not an employee of the district. But if they have the appropriate licensure, it's legal for them to drive it. But if it's a paid employee of the district driving our kids, it's a different story. Yeah. And there are smaller vehicles that have non-CDL requirements. But just like with volleyball, we've been caravanning three vans to most event... Well, to all of the events. Ever driven a bus yet? One because it's too stinking hot, and we've driven some distances. And it's actually cheaper to caravan three vans than it is to pay DS to take a bus.
Is there any possible way one of their drivers would drive a bus?
There aren't any.
Even if we get away from the air brakes, and they just have to drive it?
Well, they can't find people to drive their hydraulic brake buses for activities. Drivers are in mass shortage right now.
I'm gonna make a motion to let Mr. Crenshaw pursue getting rid of this bus in some fashion. Putting the money aside if it works, something we can use.
Okay.
I will second that.
Okay.
We need to get rid of it. We need to get some money out of it while it's worth something.
Okay, I have a motion by Gina, seconded by Bree, that the Board of Education approve the sale of bus 20, the 2014 Bluebird 71-passenger bus, and pursue other, another option for activities. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Five of them.
How many passenger buses are the DS bus numbers?
Forty-two.
I wanna say they're 42.
That's 42.
Yeah.
Do you know what DS buses are currently?
Capacity.
Capacity.
They vary in size.
Like the ones going to the...
I think they have a big 70-passenger. They did last year. But I think a lot of theirs are in the 50s.
Would be running on our routes. Did they vary?
It varies.
It varies depending on the route.
Yeah, okay.
And usually, the 70-passenger buses with the idea that kids are through USC.
Yeah, that's true.
So it works better with younger kids. It doesn't work so well with middle school, high school kids.
And the elementary school uses it for Farm Day.
Yes, they do. And they'll use it this Friday for the Great Vine Air Show as well.
And typically, that's about the only usage it gets, is field trips at the elementary school.
Moving on, LJSHS Gymnasium HVAC bids.
Hey, so, you know, we put this out to bid, and they were due Friday at 10 o'clock. Two companies came out to bid at 11:00. Two companies came out to bid and only one submitted a bid. Street Plumbing came in as the only bidder to put two units like over at the elementary school behind the west side of the high school and duct work up in there. It would include an ionized emitting air purifier system. It would include air conditioning for the gymnasium and the bid came in at $132,900. Now, on top of that, that does include a heater for the metal shop because there's not a heater there now. On top of that, there are two other charges to take into consideration. One is our EPM climate control system. Their estimate to hook up those units is $4,700. And then fire tech to put the fire alarm system in. It has to have sensors inside the duct that detects smoke in case the units catch on fire and start blowing smoke into the building to shut it down. That's $2,500. So there's an additional $7200 on top of the 132,900 bid for that replacement. This does qualify for SR dollars because it is HVAC and it's improving air quality, especially with the ionizer attachment that puts special beams in the air and makes it clean and refreshed. And those would operate even if it were just the fan. If the heater wasn't on and the air conditioner wasn't on and it was a fan only, it would still ionize and purify the air. I know the gymnasium can get quite warm and I haven't, well, the graduation last year was pretty toasty. So you know, we wouldn't air condition it all the time. Teams that compete in there have told me already, we don't want it too cool because everywhere we go is hot, so we need to get used to playing in some semblance of heat. So it wouldn't be something that we would run all the time, but for special events, it would be nice to have a cooling option there. As you know, it's replacing those direct fire units that blow out, that Dennis has to climb up on the roof with mountain climbing gear, clip onto a safety rope to try to refire them. This brings them down to ground level, just like the elementary school. One would go south of the woodshop door, towards the loading dock. They were going to put the other one right in front of the windows of the metal shop, but I asked them to amend the specs so that it would go into the concrete, not block the only natural light that gets in that shop. So they did have to amend the specs to get the duct work to come up above the window and go over and then go into the building because what natural light is there, I didn't want one of those monster things three feet from it blocking everything. So this is the move on that. They are carrier units that they would install. They are about eight weeks out from getting the units, but they can get pieces of it to start building. They can start building duct work, they can start building the rack that it would sit on and get things in place so that when those units arrive, they just set them in and hook them up. So I met with them today to talk about the specific fix of the timeline and they would think by January 1st, their project should be complete, given that it's two months out to get the equipment.
SR2 would pay for the entire project?
Part of SR2. I've got about $70,000 left in SR2 that I've earmarked for that project that we've been sitting on, and then the balance would come from SR3.
So none of it would have to come from?
Zero. That's why, so to me, it's so important if SR dollars can be used for mechanical issues, as something that's going to last us 15 years, that's why I'm really a proponent of then moving toward replacing those other units up on top of the high school that are 26 years old. We still have 20 units up there that are 26 years old, inefficient and do not clean the air. So I'm just a big proponent of using this federal dollars for something that has a 15 to 20-year lifespan for the district.
To clarify a couple things here, the 132,900 is the bid from Street for the installation of the two carrier units and duct work?
Yes, and electrical.
And electrical.
Because they have to run the electrical over to it.
The EPM hookup, is that Street also or is that?
No, that's a separate company.
Okay.
And the reason that we got prices from them separately is because typically a contractor, if they hire a sub like that to do that work, then they throw a percentage on top of it. So it's cheaper to deal with the subs directly. So that's why FireTech and EPM were contacted directly, so we didn't have any markup on that.
Okay. And that was $4,700 for the EPM and 25 for FireTech?
For the fire alarm system, yes.
Okay. So we entertain a motion to approve the 132,900 to Streets for the hookup and electrical, 4,700 to EPM, and 2,500 to FireTech for the fire alarms.
I just moved.
Okay.
My second.
Motion by David, seconded by Gina, that the board of education approve installing new units at the high school for air conditioning and heating in the gym and heat in the metal shop, this will also tie in there, to Street Plumbing. It'd be $132,900 to Streets, 4,700 to EPM and 2,500 for fire alarm to FireTech for fire systems and duct work. All in favor? Opposed? Admin reports. Ex-plore reports, Lumenor Packett. Have anything you want to add?
I just have two quick things to add. If you look at our enrollment numbers, it states on there that we have mine students and pre-K3. Actually, today we enrolled another one, so we're at 10 students. That's pre-K3. Unfortunately, we got received funding for them. However, it does get them ready for school on an on-time basis, so we're at capacity in our three-year preschool program. So. The other thing I wanted to say was, if you look in there, we have two building goals. One of those, as I talked about before, is to increase real-world learning for students, more field trips, more experiences, more experts. So we do invite any businesses or organizations or individuals, we would love to have them share their knowledge at the school. The other thing that we really would like to increase as a building is more parent and community involvement. So I would give this open invitation to board members. If you'd like to read, come and talk about what you do, go on a field trip, we would love to have you join us in any way, so you can pay to see what we do every day. Thank you.
I ask you a few other questions.
Yes.
On your numbers, you have it broken down here per grade?
Yes.
How does that compare to last year?
I actually sent something to Mr. Crenshaw on all of the amount of students that we lost. Overall, we're down as a building, the high school is up in numbers, we are down. So it should balance itself out. And Mr. Crenshaw, I think, has the full numbers. I'm not sure where the high school is at exactly.
I guess you can get more information. Just a couple minutes. And you have Nikki's report for the back.
I really like the little videos that she's doing each week. That's really nice. I do too.
Any other questions, comments?
You know, I might give a couple shout-outs and just for Mrs. Flynn's report. I was up at the school working Sunday a little bit and just to see the number of people that are in there on a weekend, big shout-out to Mr. Wolting. He was up there meeting kids to work in paw print and try to get some production caught up. Saw another staff member there. I know, I don't know if I told you this story, but as I get around tractors and equipment, as much as I love it, I might not be the most expert person, so I was mowing on a weekend and hooked the brush hog up to the tractor. Didn't realize that you move the tongue back and forth or the hitch, what do you call that thing?
Drawbar.
The drawbar. So I didn't realize you moved it in and out depending on what implement you were on, you know? So it was hooked to the bat wing mower. I hooked it up to the brush hog because I needed to get some work done around the creek where it's grown over the sidewalk. And well, little did I know that it needed to go in for that piece of equipment. So when I lifted it up, I caved in the front of the brush hog and hit the blades and shut it all down. Now, but the most exciting thing is, the next Monday, I took it over to the ag shop. I drove the tractor over there. I'm like, gee, guess what? And she's like, this is fantastic. The kids can do real-life repairs. I went over there, they've cut the whole front end off of that thing. They didn't straighten it out. They're rebuilding the front end. And to have that kind of, I mean, excitement over my mistakes, I don't get that at home. But it's just, it was just, we have a staff in both these buildings that do phenomenal jobs just above and beyond, and I don't know that they get enough shout-outs.
Need some staff excited to fix our free mess ups. Scary looking mess ups. Oh, electrodes, dick. Well, I guess. Think I ran to your?
Oh, okay. Well, let me hit on that student count because it's an area of concern for me. I look back at my 2020 SO66, which is the superintendent's annual report, and when I submitted last October, 1st of October, which we're getting close to, our K5 student count was 143 and currently it is 130, K5, I know including preschool, pre-K4, pre-K3. So you know, we've seen a decrease of 13 students there. Mrs. Schmidt is very on top of this and she has a roster of what students, that she shared with me, a roster of what students weren't there and why they weren't there anymore. And I would just say, it's kind of just the natural evolution of life and families, move aways, job changes, things like that. But we have lost 13 kids there and that's, in my mind, that's not the building we want to lose kids because those numbers will trickle up. We have a surprisingly strong number at the junior, senior high. Last year, we had 164 when I did my report. This year, Power School shows 176 kids in the junior, senior high, and I think we enrolled another one today, which pushes us to 177. The problem is, those kids are going to graduate in the next four or five years, so that's why I'm concerned about elementary numbers, because I don't want to get this pattern of low numbers there that creep through the whole system. We've got some big classes at the junior, senior high, 28s, you know, and we had a graduating class of 19 last year, and we've got some big numbers. We have a couple of classes, three classes, that has some good numbers down there, but this overall trend is troubling to me. Now, hopefully, we can turn that around as a community, as a county, as everything else. It's going to take a whole lot of pieces of the puzzle coming together to attract families with kids that will, you know, be in our schools and stay in our schools and graduate from our schools, so just wanted to share those with you. So here's the funny thing, when you add the loss and the gain together, last year, I reported 307 total students, K5. This year, we're at 306. So we haven't seen, now, I will say, from the year before, we've dropped off from 311. So we do have loss, but we will be budgeting at that 311, if you remember, we've talked about it a lot. It's the previous year and the next previous year, you can take your highest number for budget purposes. But there will come a point, if this trend doesn't turn, that then we'll have another reckoning with the budget where we'll have to take a real number and it'll be a drop. The second thing I wanted to talk about was that practice field maintenance. I mentioned it a little, I think, prior. I am absolutely stunned, when I went over there and mowed the practice field, I was, I just could not believe the sticker patches that are over there, huge areas that have been overrun. And I met with a lawn service and I'm like, I don't even get this thing. It looks like crabgrass and it's weird because I told you over at our walkabout, and over there, there's just these huge arms going out of this rooted plant, and the rooted plant looks dead and brown, but it just creeps out there and then pops up. Gazillions of stickers and every one of those is going to make another one of those plants. And I've talked to K-State Extension Horticulturist, I've talked to this lawn service, and I guess it's a real bear to get rid of those things. But it's not getting better. The lawn service estimated that every treatment just on the practice field would be $1,000 and it needs to be treated frequently. And in their experience, and I met them at the practice field to show them the severity of it, they said this will take three to four years to get under control. It's that bad. It's gotten so far away. But those are those things that as we have our workday, we can talk about strategies. You know, there's a lot of information about, do you burn it off? Well, is the fire hot enough to kill those seeds or you just burn it, the stickers off and leave in the seed to germinate? You know, it's like slow fire, fast fire, is fire an option? Do you kill everything there and start over in the fall with grass? What do you do, practice on the football field? Our football field is beautiful. It is, it's one of the best I've seen. You know, it is thick, it is plush, it is weed-free, and Dennis does a great job taking care of that football field. But the practice field is horrible, just simply horrible. And maybe there's other opinions out there about how to tackle this. I have never seen this plant in my whole life and I hate it because it's in my backyard with my dogs. I hate that thing. And they're everywhere here. I think they call them sandburrs. Is that right? That's the, not the three-spiked, what was that other thing called?
Oh, that's a goby.
A goby. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, these are real, these are a real problem. Our kids, it's so bad over there that Coach told me he doesn't have the kids get down in a three-point stand or get stickers in their hands, so they just go down to their knees. But can you imagine being tackled in a patch of those? Because that's what's happening to our kids and they're coming up covered in them.
I've heard a little bit about that in my house floor.
And there's not, you know, it's just, it's going to take a long time to remediate. It's just gotten away. And I have heard that back in, years back, those were beautiful practice fields too, and it's just gotten away from us, so I think we need to get it back. And as we have our workday, maybe that's something that becomes a priority over this of taking care of as we do planning. Okay, COVID testing. You know, this, we are seeing cases here now, we are seeing quarantines here now, we are seeing quarantines that could possibly happen in our buildings this week, that could involve a significant number of students. So I wanted to tell you again, some of the things that Ladonna and I have been talking about at KDHE, et cetera, et cetera. If we have students test positive in close contact with them, those people will be in quarantine. If we can isolate classes, we can still do a self-contained quarantine, just so you know, when we, if we start going down this road. Those self-quarantine classes will be required to wear masks for the 10 days, those classrooms for their quarantine. There's options out there, the test to stay in play. Again, I don't know that it's our role, but I know a lot of schools are doing it, where people who should have been quarantined can be tested in the morning. If they test negative, they can be in the building, but they must wear a mask. But they must wear a mask until the end of their quarantine, and they get tested every morning. Some districts that are doing it have said it's turned into an absolute nightmare because it is now a reporting headache. You have to take all kinds of data, submit to KDHE. There's one superintendent I talked to said they're testing 80 kids a day. And the test takes 15 minutes to get the results. So they have kids that aren't getting class till second, third hour, you know? But I fear that we may see a little, we, we will see this, I think, eventually. We'll see this again. I just want you to be aware of options, that it's out there, and that we may, before the end of this week, have some quarantine issues. Just so you stay up to speed on it. If it becomes a crisis, if it becomes a big deal, two students catching COVID in school, the CDC considers that an outbreak now. So transmission in a school, they're calling that an outbreak. We'll just have to see how it goes. I don't wanna panic and I don't wanna overplan. My plan is simply to see how it goes, manage as best we can, continue our sanitation protocols. And if we get in a situation where it's problematic, I will simply shut down the schools for a period of time. And we will regroup and figure out what to do. No different than when the regular flu came through here and this district had to take a pause and just let everything kind of settle down. And so I'm prepared to do that. But it, it's still out there and it's still in the news. And we just need to be, we just don't wanna be surprised by anything. So I wanna keep you on the loop. On flu vaccinations this year, because, because the Lincoln County school districts do not have COVID safety protocols in place, i.e. masks, Lincoln County Health is not comfortable coming into the buildings for flu shots. However, if, if they would be in a location with their masks and PPE, whatever they wanna wear on, if we would have our students and staff put a mask on to go into the vaccination site, they would feel comfortable with that. Otherwise, they would like to schedule on a Saturday. And I fear that our participation wouldn't be as great on a Saturday as if they were in the school. So I would like your, your okay or your support to be able to say, if we have a vaccination location that's somewhat isolated, that we would support staff and students who wanna get a flu shot to just put a mask on before they go in. And then after they're done, come out and they, then the masks are optional as our policy. But I think we need to respect the Lincoln County Health Department's concerns and some of their protocols. I don't think that's too much a ask to have it in our schools. So it's ready to be available to staff and students.
Do parents give their parental permission for this?
Yes.
Yes.
They have to sign up for it.
So they would do it in the school?
Yes, if we would, if we would help them out with some mitigation protocols.
So just like before, parents will fill out the form and if they want their kid to get a flu shot, they'll get it at school? They'll just have to put a mask on?
Yes.
So like at the, at the nurse's office door, put a mask on, go sit down, get your vaccination, walk out, take your mask.
But it's the same thing, I mean, if you went to the, to the clinic to get that done, they're gonna have to wear a mask anyway?
Yeah.
So is that, I don't think it would be nothing of a deal. If they're more to what we've always done in the past, just put on a mask to get shot?
I would just like to tell them that we would support that to get as many normal flu vaccinations as we could. And that's all I have for today. Thank you.
With that, that leads us to executive session for personnel. I'll have a side base look, wasn't sure. Okay. Do we know how much time?
We have five-minute recess.
Five minutes? Make it 10? Oh, five-minute recess? Okay. We will take a five-minute, you wanna take a five-minute break and then go into executive session? Okay? Education will take a five-minute break here. And then we will move into executive session for personnel.